All right, I'm gonna call the Camarillo City Council, the Camarillo Sanitary District, and the Camarillo Library Board to order, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to please give a roll call.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Here.
Councilmember Santangelo.
Here.
Councilmember Trembley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tennyson.
Here.
And Mayor Kildy.
Here. Okay, with that, Martita, would you mind lead us in the flag salute?
Oh, sure. Please stand. Hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You're welcome.
Okay, so with that approved, the agenda, any changes to the agenda tonight? Staff knows of. Hearing none, we'll move on. The next order of business tonight is a presentation, and this is exciting. It's the Career Online High School graduates, and I'm gonna ask Mandy Nasser if she would meet me at the stage here with your graduates here, if you proceed as well. Okay, so I'm gonna turn this over to Mandy, but before that, we're pleased to recognize the graduates of the Career Online High School program offered at our own Camarillo Library in the Adult Literacy Center, and I'm gonna hand that over to our library director now. Mandy Nasser is gonna tell us more about this exciting program and the graduates, too. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Kildy. Before I introduce our amazing graduates, I want to give some background about this program. So since July 2023, Camarillo Public Library has been an active participant in the Career Online High School program, which is offered by the California State Library. Career Online High School enables California adults to earn a high school diploma free of charge through our Adult Literacy Center. The library has enrolled 13 students in its inception, and we are proud to announce our first five graduates of our program. These five graduates have received career certificates in the fields of office management, home care professional, childcare, and education. And today, we are so fortunate to have two of our graduates with us over here. So Ignacio Torres, he has[183.11][183.11](applause) He recently graduated from Career Online High School with a focus on office management. Ignacio started Career Online High School so that he may advance in his career at Community Memorial Hospital, sorry, Community Memorial Hospital, and we're so proud of you, Ignacio. I have a certificate for you. Our next graduate is Nulshon Canty. She is also a recent graduate who focused her studies on home care professional. She is a small local business owner, and she plans on continuing her education. She just applied for college, and she hopes to attend in the fall. So she has big dreams, and we're so proud of her.[193.11][193.11](applause) We have three additional graduates from the program, and unfortunately, they were not able to attend tonight, but I want to briefly announce who they are. Matthew Needham graduated with a focus on childcare and education. Matthew took this opportunity to go back to high school so that he can redeem himself for a better future. Fabiola Gonzalez attended with a focus on home care professional. Fabiola decided to attend the program because she wants to have a better opportunities, and she strives to be the best version of herself. Our last graduate is Gloria Gonzalez, who focused her studies on office management. We, again, are so proud of all of our students who have prioritized their education while also, again, maintaining their full-time jobs and family responsibilities. So they worked really around the clock in order to achieve this. Most people who have enrolled in this program have heard about it through word of mouth. I encourage any adult who is interested in obtaining a high school diploma to come by our Adult Literacy Center to enroll, and they could talk to any of our staff members to do that. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor Kildy, for the opportunity to speak about Career Online High School.
Thank you. We're really excited about this program. Now, I don't want to put you on the spot. Would either of you like to make a comment or anything at this point?
Hello, everyone.[217.11][217.11](laughing) Okay. I have an opportunity for this program. Thank you for Mara and Alyssa, I don't know where Alyssa, that introduced me to this program is to help me, give me the opportunity to start, and I would continue to my college in the in the fall, in the winter of college. Thank you.[224.11][224.11](applause)
I'd just like to say thank you very much. I'm very grateful for this opportunity and the fact that you have this online. It was so much better and so much easier, and my wife is the one that pushed me to do this. So, I mean, thank you very much. I'm very grateful.[231.11][231.11](applause)
Thank you. Before you go, I'm gonna ask my colleagues here if they'd like to make a comment. So I'm gonna start off with Vice Mayor Tennyson, please.
Ignacio, I appreciate your comment. Some of us up here have wives that push us to do things we otherwise wouldn't do. So congratulations to your wife for being an inspiration to them. I'm proud that our Camarillo City Library is involved in a program like this to give people an opportunity to further their education and maybe spur them onto lifelong learning. Congratulations on the milestone that two of you have achieved, and the three that aren't here, be proud of yourself, keep learning, keep working, and you'll be a success.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Many congratulations to you, both, to the other graduates and to your families. Thank you also to staff, Mandy and your staff for running this wonderful program for our community members, and if you get to celebrate, which I'm sure you will, feel free to invite us to the party.
Thank you. You want to, Councilmember Santangelo?
Ignacio and Nulshon, you are testaments to the success of the programs like these. So thank you for being here, and many congratulations, and best wishes for all that the future holds for both of you. And Mandy and your staff, thank you, and thank you for continuing to support programs like these.
Thank you. Councilmember Trembley.
We have a tradition on this council that you may not be aware of, that when we agree with all of our colleagues' sentiments, we simply say ditto. Ditto. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. You were really happy, and everybody that made this happen, it takes a whole bunch of people to make this happen, and your efforts don't go unnoticed. And congratulations to both of you, and all the graduates, we're super proud of you. Thanks for being here.[266.11][266.11](applause) Okay, this is a time for general public comments, for non-agenda items. I am going to turn it over to the city clerk to make the announcement, please.
Yeah, so far, I have received six requests to speak under general public comments. If anybody out in the audience would like to speak and you haven't submitted your name, I encourage you to come see the city clerk's staff at the desk to put in your name. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. There is a timer that is visible, that will be visible on the two broadcast displays when you start speaking. The numbers will turn orange at one minute and red when your time is up, and that time will move on to the next speaker. When I call your name, please come up to the public podium, state your name, and speak directly into the microphone. So the first name on the list I have is Jeffrey Paluga.
Thank you.
First of all, let me thank Mr. Tennyson and Mrs. Martinez Bravo and the mayor, and the rest of the city council, for in these times when the rule of law and due process and democracy are under assault on a national level, here at the local level, we are still free to assemble and petition our government to address the common good and represent the will of the people without fear of retribution and being picked up on the streets by our local or state law enforcement for exercising our free First Amendment rights unlike under unlike federal law enforcement. Elizabeth Martinez Mergan and I currently reside at Casa del Norte Senior Mobile Home Park. I think we are all aware of how unfavorable housing has become in California, especially for those on a fixed income. Liz and I are here today to petition the city council to first recognize the uncontrolled high mobile home space rent here in Camarillo, then to study the problem in an unbiased way, and then to act urgently on it. We became aware of that Camarillo mobile home parks have very high space rent. At the two senior parks, rent alone is reaching $2,035 and $1,250 respectively. The family park is at $2,065, soon to go up again above the Social Security COLA inflation rate and the CPI index, taking all the raise and giving it to park owners. The next question is, why is the space rent so high compared to the surrounding cities with mobile home parks? Space rent with about the same anomalies are running between $6 and $850 per month, less than half of Camarillo's mobile home space rent. Why? We dug deeper, we found the likely answer was not hard to find. Camarillo, unlike Ventura County, Ventura City, Oxnard, Santa Paula, and an additional 103 communities throughout California, Camarillo has no type of space rent stabilization ordinance. These cities, over the past 10 to 20 years, have experienced land rent increases limited and tied to the CPI index or the COLA index, along with many other rules and conditions to protect mobile homeowners and the park owners fairly. The city, Camarillo, is essentially providing a safe harbor for mobile home park owners to exploit senior citizens, mobile homeowners, with uncontrolled annual space rent --
He recently graduated from Career Online High School with a focus on office management. Ignacio started Career Online High School so that he may advance in his career at Community Memorial Hospital, sorry, Community Memorial Hospital, and we're so proud of you, Ignacio. I have a certificate for you. Our next graduate is Nulshon Canty. She is also a recent graduate who focused her studies on home care professional. She is a small local business owner, and she plans on continuing her education. She just applied for college, and she hopes to attend in the fall. So she has big dreams, and we're so proud of her. We have three additional graduates from the program, and unfortunately, they were not able to attend tonight, but I want to briefly announce who they are. Matthew Needham, graduate of Focus on Childcare and Education. Matthew took this opportunity to go back to high school so that he can redeem himself for a better future. Fabiola Gonzalez attended with a Focus on Home Care Professional. Fabiola decided to attend the program because she wants to have a better opportunities, and she strives to be the best version of herself. Our last graduate is Gloria Gonzalez, who focused her studies on office management. We, again, are so proud of all of our students who have prioritized their education while also, again, maintaining their full-time jobs and family responsibilities. So they worked really around the clock in order to achieve this. Most people who have enrolled in this program have heard about it through word of mouth. I encourage any adult who is interested in obtaining a high school diploma to come by our Adult Literacy Center to enroll, and they could talk to any of our staff members to do that. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor Kildy, for the opportunity to speak about Career Online High School.
Thank you. We're really excited about this program. Now, I don't want to put you on the spot. Would either of you like to make a comment or anything at this point?
Okay. I have an opportunity for this program. Thank you for Mara and Alyssa, I don't know where Alyssa, that introduced me to this program is to help me, give me the opportunity to start, and I would continue to my college in the, in the fall, in the winter of college. Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you very much. I'm very grateful for this opportunity and the fact that you have this online. It was so much better and so much easier, and my wife is the one that pushed me to do this. So, I mean, thank you very much. I'm very grateful.
Thank you. Before you go, I'm going to ask my colleagues here if they'd like to make a comment. So I'm going to start off with Vice Mayor Tennyson, please.
Ignacio, I appreciate your comment. Some of us up here have wives that push us to do things we otherwise wouldn't do. So congratulations to your wife for being an inspiration to them. I'm proud that our Camarillo City Library is involved in a program like this to give people an opportunity to further their education and maybe spur them onto lifelong learning. Congratulations on the milestone that two of you have achieved, and the three that aren't here, be proud of yourself, keep learning, keep working, and you'll be a success.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Many congratulations to you, both, to the other graduates and to your families. I thank you also to staff, Mandy and your staff for running this wonderful program for our community members. And if you get to celebrate, which I'm sure you will, feel free to invite us to the party.
Thank you. You want to, Councilmember Santangelo?
Ignacio and Nulshon, you are testaments to the success of the programs like these. So thank you for being here, and many congratulations, and best wishes for all that the future holds for both of you. And Mandy and your staff, thank you, and thank you for continuing to support programs like these.
Thank you. Councilmember Trembley?
We have a tradition on this council that you may not be aware of, that when we agree with all of our colleagues' sentiments, we simply say ditto. Ditto. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. You were really happy, and everybody that made this happen, it takes a whole bunch of people to make this happen, and your efforts don't go unnoticed. And congratulations to both of you, and all the graduates, we're super proud of you. Okay, this is a time for general public comments, for non-agenda items. I am going to turn it over to the city clerk to make the announcement, please.
Yes, so far, I have received six requests to speak under general public comments. If anybody out in the audience would like to speak, and you haven't submitted your name, I encourage you to come see the city clerk's staff at the desk to put in your name. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. There is a timer that is visible, that will be visible on the two broadcast displays when you start speaking. The numbers will turn orange at one minute and red when your time is up, and that time will move on to the next speaker. When I call your name, please come up to the public podium, state your name, and speak directly into the microphone. So the first name on the list I have is Jeffrey Paluga.
Thank you.
First of all, let me thank Mr. Tennyson and Mrs. Martinez Bravo and the mayor, and the rest of the city council. For in these times when the rule of law and due process and democracy are under assault on a national level, here at the local level, we are still free to assemble and petition our government to address the common good and represent the will of the people without fear of retribution and being picked up on the streets by our local or state law enforcement for exercising our free First Amendment rights unlike under, unlike federal law enforcement. Elizabeth Martinez Merga and I currently reside at Casa del Norte Senior Mobile Home Park. I think we are all aware of how unfavorable housing has become in California, especially for those on a fixed income. Liz and I are here today to petition the city council to first recognize the uncontrolled high mobile home space rent here in Camarillo, then to study the problem in an unbiased way, and then to act urgently on it. We became aware of that Camarillo mobile home parks have very high space rent. At the two senior parks, rent alone is reaching $2,035 and $1,250 respectively. The family park is at $2,065, soon to go up again above the Social Security COLA inflation rate and the CPI index, taking all the raise and giving it to park owners. The next question is, why is the space rent so high compared to the surrounding cities with mobile home parks? Space rent with about the same anomalies are running between $6 and $850 per month, less than half of Camarillo's mobile home space rent. Why? We dug deeper, we found the likely answer was not hard to find. Camarillo, unlike Ventura County, Ventura City, Oxnard, Santa Paula, and in additional 103 communities throughout California, Camarillo has no type of space rent stabilization ordinance. These cities, over the past 10 to 20 years, have experienced land rent increases limited and tied to the CPI index or the COLA index, along with many other rules and conditions to protect mobile homeowners and the park owners fairly. The city, Camarillo, is essentially providing a safe harbor for mobile home park owners to exploit senior citizens, mobile homeowners, with uncontrolled annual space rent increases eating away at senior citizens' monthly fixed income. The park owners recognize they can also eat up the equity acquired in the mobile home itself. When a prospective buyer of a home in one of these parks sees how high the space rent, immediately.
I'm sorry, could you wrap it? I have to be fair to everybody. They have three minutes. It's really important. Could you wrap it up, please?
Okay. What I'm asking is the city council and the planning commission to investigate and implement a rent space stabilization ordinance similar to 103 communities throughout the state of California that help protect senior citizens and protect their COLA increase on Social Security and tie it into the CPI index. And basically, what that does is...
Yeah, we understand.
CPI is 5%. A lot of the communities allow the space rent to go up 2.5%. Of course, there are...
Okay. I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, sir. I really want to be fair to everybody. It's three minutes, so we understand, and I really appreciate you being here. If you would, what we like to do here is we try not to have applause, and there's a simple reason for that. We don't want to offend either side. So if you could limit that, that's really, really important. We want to be fair to everybody that comes up. So with that, city clerk, is there another?
The next speaker is Michael Wolf.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm also from Casa del Norte Mobile Home Park. I moved there just last September, and already I've received a notice of a rent increase. And I wanted to point out that when we get Social Security increases, usually our Medicare goes up almost the same amount. So actually, we're not really getting an increase. And if, I don't know how the system works here, but I was going to, previous speaker, I was going to give him the rest of my time, because basically, that's all I had to say, because I want you, like he said, to look into stabilizing the rent in the mobile home parks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. Please excuse me for not removing my hat.
That's all right.
My head would blind you all. I'm representing the Casa del Norte Mobile Home Park, 388 Central Avenue. I've lived there since 2001. The owner's had a rent increase every year for those years. He is currently making over $1 million a year from that particular park. Property taxes are right around $40,000. The staff, when I moved in, there was a manager, an assistant manager, a full-time handyman. That has decreased. Do we have a manager, a part-time handyman, and the maintenance has suffered greatly. I put together a list of those things. If you'd like, I'll leave them here. You can peruse them at your leisure. There was a vacancy on the rent review committee. Two years before COVID, I applied and was accepted. When I was on the committee and there was a case to be heard, I made the effort to drive around and look at whatever property was involved, and that committee did excellent work. Unfortunately, the former city clerk felt it was an impairment on her time. She was getting ready to retire, and she just banded the committee, one of the biggest mistakes that's been made around here for quite a while. We appeared the next time before a mediator from Everdine. I don't know if she is an attorney or not. We had 23 people from the park showed up to testify. They were told, stick to the facts, no harangues, no emotional release, stick to the facts. She listened to about half of them and decided in the favor of the owner. Casa del Norte is a senior park federally protected, is a senior park. With the disappearance of the review committee, there is no protection against large rent increases. The staff, as I mentioned, has been reduced to a manager, a part-time handyman. The service has gotten worse and worse, and you only have to take a look around. There's a mobile home that the man purchased two years ago immediately covered the front with camouflage canvas, said he was going to remodel. He was told the building permit was required. It shuffled back and forth between the owner, the state, and the city. It's an eyesore, or it's been there for two years, and no action has been taken to make the occupant comply with the regulations of how your property appears.
Thank you, Charles. If you could wrap it up, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks for your attention.
Thank you for being here.
The next speaker will be Elizabeth Merga.
Good afternoon, city council. The purpose of this petition to the city council is to implement a rent space stabilization ordinance for the mobile home parks where space rents are going up. Mobile homeowners, unlike apartments, tenants, or residents of their rental stocks, are in the unique position of having made a substantial investment in the residence of which spaces rented or leased. Removal and/or relocation of the mobile homes for a park space is not a particular alternative to accepting an extensive rent increase, in that it can only be accomplished at a substantial cost. And in many instances, many cause extensions damage to the mobile home and loss of, such as, integrated landscaping and supporting structures in consistence with the new location. Because mobile homes are often owned by senior citizens, person on fixed incomes, and person of low to moderate income, exorbitant rent increases fall upon these individuals with particularly hardships. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Devo Brown.
You can move that microphone up a bit, too, if that helps you. You're pretty tall. Thanks very much, esteemed councilmembers and mayor. And I, first of all, thank you for your service to our community. And I know yours is not a particularly high-paying job, so obviously, your purpose is greater here than financial gain, and I personally appreciate that as a member, as a veteran of our armed forces. I appreciate your service, and city manager, you as well, sir. I sent you all a copy of my lengthy written-out statement this morning in an email. I copied you, sir, city manager, as well as the city clerk. So I'll pay you the respect of not reading it to you now. I believe that you all probably have quite the education, especially Dr. Martinez Bravo, as we can see by your title. I'm here to talk about the same thing. I'm here to talk about getting us a, establishing a mobile home park rent stabilization ordinance for the 55 and older parks here in Camarillo. Specifically, the one where I live is Camarillo Mobile Estates. And I believe I'm in Councilmember Santangelo's district. We don't, I don't personally think that it's a problem with these people, these corporations making a profit. I personally have been a business owner my whole life. I've been self-employed my whole life. I've been an executive in two different companies. We're here to make profit. We're here to make, it's a free enterprise. What we don't like is the fact that there's a relationship between the residents of these parks and the owners of the parks that rent them to them. And that relationship is a business relationship. And unfortunately, that business relationship is lopsided. It's very lopsided, and there's not much we can do about it as residents. I'm a homeowner, but I'm a homeowner on the lower level. My home is only worth $150,000. It's not like a regular stick-and-mortar home. But it's my investment. It's what I got, okay? I'm still working, and I'm about to retire myself at 64 years old. I worked a long time, and I'm really looking forward to retiring. But the way things are right now, I'm not going to retire in Camarillo. I'm not going to get to, because what's happening is, we're going to be priced out of the market as far as the rents are concerned within a moderate amount of time. It won't be long. Many of my neighbors have already had to put their homes up for sale because they simply can't afford the rent. Now, inflation is reality, and we are all paying more. Every one of us in this room is paying more to live in the United States of America and to live in the city of Camarillo. It's just the way it is. But what we're asking for is not a free ride. We're not asking for anything anybody else doesn't have, but we are asking for a little bit of help. We need your help. If we don't get help from you, it's the lambs against the wolves. They have all the power, they have all the rules, they have everything on their side, and all we have is you. And that's what we're asking for right now, is we need you to intercede on our behalf. And we need you to intercede on our behalf. We don't need for them to be at a disadvantage. I want them to continue to make money. I want them to continue to grow and prosper. But I want to be able to live out my life in this beautiful city, and I don't think I'm asking for too much. And I don't think the other residents of our city are asking for too much either.
Okay, yeah. If you wouldn't mind, I'm just trying to be fair to everybody.
No, I appreciate it. Thanks very much, and thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments.
The last speaker I have under general public comments is Marco Leon.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Marco Leon. I also live in Casa del Norte, and I thought I had something to complain about, but after listening to Mr. Tater, he's been there since 2001, and he has seen the rent race every single year. Well, my story is, I moved in there three years ago. I actually signed the lease to buy on March 1st of 2023. I didn't move in right away because I have to fix my house. Three weeks later, I could have noticed that my rent wasn't going to go up, and I hadn't even moved in. And it's raised, it's been raised 23, 24, 25, and it'll probably go up next year. So I'm just here to support my neighbors and the community, and basically, that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Are there anyone else, city clerk, that you have a card for?
There's nothing else on my list.
Okay, I'm going to ask, is anybody else in the public that wants to make a public comment at this particular time? If you'd come forward, you can come forward, sir, please. If you would just state your name for the record, I appreciate it.
Ed Blumenstock. I'd just like to ask a question. How many people here are residents of mobile home parks? I think that shows where your attention might be placed. This is very important to us. I know it's not as important as the graduates, but, and I don't mean to be flippant, but it's really important because we're going to lose a lot of residents because people can't afford the rent, and it's looking like it's going up and up and up. We need your help. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to make a public comment at this time?
I do have one more named that's on the list now.
You could come up here if you wouldn't mind, Audrey, please. And if you'd move that microphone real close to you, that'd be great, so we can all hear you. Whichever one you want to use. Just move it.
I'm sorry, I believe I had a doctor's appointment.
That's okay.
I don't even know where to start. First of all, I want to do an analogy. I'm a chocoholic, and I like chocolate. And sometimes I go to Sprouts, and I can get chocolate there. It's like $12 a pound. Well, I can't afford $12, so I'll just maybe get a quarter of a pound. So last week, I went, and it was $1.5. It was $18 a pound. So I can't afford it anymore. So it's the same way with your rent, because this time, this year, it's $400 more. Next year, it's going to be, what, $700 more? When will it stop? Because I'm 91, I can't go to work, I'm on a fixed income like most other people in our park, and that's why they're there. And I think at a time like this, I don't think, we're not asking for charity, we're asking for fairness. And this is not fair, what's been going on. Other communities have been able to do this for seniors. Why can't our, why can't you guys do it? And as far as rent, they say, well, we're repair, we're, excuse me, I'm kind of excited. They say, well, okay, rents an apartment are X amount of money, say $2,000 or whatever, and they're comparing the rents in apartments. It's not the same. An apartment owner, they, what do they do? They have to take, replace the refrigerator, they have to replace the stove, they have to do the elevator, they have to do all kinds of, oh, when the person moves out, they paint, they remove the carpeting, or they have to clean the carpeting. They have a lot of expenses. Our park stops at the curb. We get everything at the curb. We own our own homes. From right at the curb on, we replace the pipes underneath the house because the pipes in the park are old and they're rusty, and we have to do all kinds of things. I know my, personally, I've spent over $25,000 on a trailer in order to have a place to live. And it's a nice park, but I think they ought to take into consideration that we shouldn't be compared to people that are renting apartments. And I think that's what's happening, because I know I had a relative that say, well, the going rate is this. The going rate is different. And I would appreciate if you could do something and make a consideration for seniors in this town. This is the third time I know in 10 years I've been here with this group, and I think it's probably time that something is done. The economy has really hit the tanks now, and I think that we ought to have some consideration. And I appreciate you taking the time to do, to hear what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, is there anyone else here that would like to address on public comments time? City clerk, do you have any other cards? Okay, so with that, that's going to get us down to...
Mayor? Mayor? I have a statement. So I know there's only so much we can say because of the Brown Act, but I would actually just be interested in bringing in an informational item on the rent stabilization ordinance, is what that looks like in other cities and throughout the state of California. And I would see if, you know, there's another council member who would be able to support me in bringing back an informational item.
Well, this is a non-agendized item, so I'm going to ask the city attorney what we can do with this.
I think she's just asking for direction to bring something back.
I believe we need to get another council member. Okay.
I support that.
So we have two council members, at least, that do support this particular time staff. Do we have some time to do that in the future? Okay. So with that, we will, again, if you could limit your applause, please, it's just, we don't particularly like to do that. If not, we've got this other tradition that if you agree with what's going on, you could kind of do this. So that's another thing we can do. So with that, we'll bring this back at another future agendized item for this. Okay. So now, that's going to get us down to the council reports, and I'm going to ask somebody or anybody that would like to start off today. Martita, would you like to start us off? That'd be great.
Sure. Thank you, mayor. So April 10th, I attended the Interface 211 20th Anniversary Celebration. April 21, I attended the Finance Committee meeting, and also April 21, I attended the Investment Committee meeting, both with our mayor. And April 22, I attended a meeting with Esteban Rodriguez... And April 22nd, I attended a meeting with Esteban Rodriguez, the Executive Director of the VC Animal Services, along with our staff members Carmen Nichols and Monique Martinez. And he's our new Executive Director there and seems to be really doing a wonderful job. And we will soon be getting a presentation from him. And at this time, I will also like to take a few moments to share a little bit about Pope Francis, a peaceful world leader who unfortunately passed away this week. Pope Francis, or Papa Francisco, was born Jorge Mario Bergoglio on December 17, 1936, in Buenos Aires, Argentina, whose family fled fascism in Italy. He made history as the first Latin American and Jesuit pope. He passed away at Casa Santa Marta on April 21, 2025, at the age of 88. His final message on Easter Sunday at St. Peter's Square focused on world peace and praying for the people in Africa, Yemen, Lebanon, Syria, Armenia, Ukraine, Sudan. And he expressed his closeness to the suffering of the Palestinian and Israeli people. Known as a People's Pope, his legacy of justice, compassion, humility, and advocacy for marginalized people lives on, leaving a mark on people of all faiths and people of no faiths at all. Today, we join millions around the world mourning the loss of this loving and compassionate world leader. I will now share a quote from his final message that he sent to the world. "I would like all of us to hope anew and revive our trust in others, including those who are different than ourselves or who come from distant lands, bringing unfamiliar customs, ways of life, and ideas. For all of us, are children of God." Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, would you like to go next?
Why would I want to follow that?
Yeah, I know. I'm putting you on the spot, aren't I?
I echo Councilmember Martinez Bravo's sentiments about the Pope. We share a faith, and the world is better off because he was with us. And hopefully, his legacy will make it continue to be better off. On April 10th, along with most of the council, I attended the Interface 211 Anniversary Breakfast. It was an enlightening and motivating event. Interface 211 was the first interface in the state of California and leads interface throughout the country. They come here to find out how Interface 211 in Ventura County works. I think they said they've served well over half a million people over the last 20 years. They are the go-to, no matter what's going on in your life. And I'm glad that they're there 24/7 for that. On April 16th, I had the opportunity to meet with the Director of the California Conservation Corps here in, just outside the city limits of Camarillo. He had two young men that are members of CCC. One of them has a dream of sitting on this dais. He's from Camarillo. And after visiting with him, and I'm sure Councilmember Santangelo will share the same sentiment, someday he will be sitting up here. The other one is from Orange County or Riverside County. He has the same dream to sit on the dais of their city council at the community he grew up in. They were impressive young men. CCC does a great job in training future firefighters, paramedics, et cetera. On April 17th, I attended the Association Water Agencies of Ventura County's 33rd Annual Water Symposium. And frankly, prior to getting on city council, I didn't pay a lot of attention to water as long as I went in the kitchen and turned on the tap or in the shower and turned on the tap and water came out. Now I know what a finite commodity that is. And water is of critical, critical importance to our residents. And hopefully, we keep the spigots going and the water flowing. On the 20, on the 18th, I attended the Local Appointment Committee with the mayor to appoint some of the members of our community to some of our citizen committees. And on April 22nd, along with Councilmember Trembley, I attended a Zoom meeting with Assembly Member Steve Bennett to talk about some of the legislative matters that are important to the city of Camarillo. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for your comments. Ms. Tangello, would you like to?
Trying. Thank you. Okay, on April 16th, I attended LAFCO in the morning. And then that afternoon, I did meet the, with the, um, the gentleman from the California Conservation Corps, Tom, the Camarillo District Director, and the, um, the two young men Hayden and Roman, who asked me so many really thoughtful questions. I was really impressed by the questions. One of the questions I have to share is, he, they asked how we get our meetings to run so smoothly. So I took that as a compliment. On April 17th, I attended CPA Executive Committee. And then early this, earlier this morning, I met with the CPA Finance Committee. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Trembley, anything to share?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. On April 10th, together with other council members, attended the 20th Anniversary of the, of 211, the Interface Breakfast. On April 11, I had committee meetings for the MetroLink Board. On April 15th, Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Authority Fiscal Committee. On the 16th, the statewide California Association of Sanitation Agencies Board Meeting. On the 22nd, with the Vice Mayor, yesterday, we met with Assembly Member Bennett and his staff regarding legislation. And then earlier today, this afternoon, I had a board meeting for Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Authority. And that's it. Thanks.
All right, thanks for your comments. On April 10th, I also attended the 211 Interface 20th Anniversary. On April 11th, I attended the Audit and Finance Committee Meeting. And April 21st, I attended the Investment and Finance Committee Meeting. Today, I actually went out to CSUCI, and I attended the community breakfast. So I know that our colleges here work very closely with CSUCI. So with that, that's all that I have at this particular point. Anyone else? Did everybody else get their say in? All right, so that's going to get us down to library activities, updates. Do we have any updates or anything with the library at this particular time?
That's a receive and file.
Okay, that's a receive and file. So we'll receive and file that. So now, we're going to ask the Moore Park College President, Dr. Julius Sukunu, to come up to the podium and give us a talk about my alma mater, Moore Park College. So Julius, welcome. Nice to see you again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff. Thank you very much for inviting me to come and share with you the successes of your local community college. I have with me this evening Chancellor Dr. Rick McLennan. I have Vice President of Moore Park College, Vice Minister of Economic Affairs. I have Deans Cabral and Dana Josepabaca. I have a Director of Advancement and Community Relations. And I have on my Career Center, Lisette Lomelli. I introduce the team that is here with us because Moore Park College's success is really the success of your local community college district. You know, the colleges of Ventura College, Oxnard College, and Moore Park College. And based on the location of Camarillo, your citizens and your constituents can go to any of those three colleges. Thankfully for us, most of those folks choose to come to Moore Park College. We have partnerships with your local high schools as well as with community agencies. And so I want to use this moment I have with you to sort of tell the story of how Moore Park College is doing, to invite you to be partners in our success and in your success and in the work that we need to do to move the community forward. Our next slide, please. The slide that you see before you identifies the cities and the various agencies that we serve. And it's important to note that we have agencies such as, as you, as you mentioned, sir, CSUCI, a university partner. But we also work with social service agencies. We work with small businesses. And because we know that part of our responsibility is to be active and productive members of the ecosystem that adds and contributes to the economic well-being of the county and certainly of the cities that we serve. And I want to call attention to the fact that our students participate in not only internships with some of these businesses, but that also they support the work that our community agencies, organizations such as Casa Pacifica are doing in helping to strengthen the well-being and health of our community. Next slide, please. I'm going to focus out my conversation with you really in the ways in which our college helps the community to grow, the way in which we care and sustain and use that ethic of care to sustain economic as well as academic and career pathway development, how we make connections between organizations and agencies for the economic well-being as well as for individual and family success of our community, and how we at Moore Park College uplift our community members, starting with our students, one student at a time. You should note that community colleges and institutions, institutions of high education across the country are a challenge within enrollment decline. That is not the case for Moore Park College. We have been growing with an increase in enrollment of 5% when we compare this year-to-date, spring semester to spring semester. That is something you should be proud of because what that tells you and what that tells us is that we are reaching our community members and we are providing to them the opportunity for higher education that allows them to build family wealth, that allows them to support the needs of our businesses and our community-based organizations. Moore Park College, next slide, please. Moore Park College is investing in career programs that are high-wage, that are high-school, that are high-demand, and that meet the needs of the, of the members of our community here in Ventura County. We have a paramedic studies program. That's one of our newer programs. And it allows individuals not only to go through an IEMT program, but to go into a paramedic's certification. And thus, they can not only start earning good wages, but also build career pathways in, in, in the allied health field. We're very proud of our partnership with the biotech sector, the partnerships that we have with Amgen, we have with Takeda, Thermo Fisher, and others who are serving our county. And in so doing, bringing the highest quality and caliber of, of medical research and, and pharmaceutical research and bio-manufacturing to our service area. What we see is that we started through our partnership with the biotech sector, a bachelor's degree, one of, one of, one of, a handful of bachelor's degrees that are, you can earn at a community college. If you get a certificate and a associate's degree in bio-manufacturing, you earn about $54,000 a year. If you get a bachelor's degree in bio-manufacturing, you earn about $85,000 a year plus. What that does, those are good jobs that require individuals not only to be able to scaffold through the certificate and associate's degree, but they can then get a bachelor's degree that increases their capacity for success, their ability to stay in the community and be successful with a baccalaureate degree that allows them to then, if they want to, actually transfer to our universities. We're very proud of that partnership with, with our biotech sector because they helped us write the curriculum. They helped us craft ways in which we can build partnerships in terms of internships and work-based opportunities. But they also provide us faculty who teach for us and who bring current text and current knowledge to our institution. Our college is very proud of the fact that we've created learning environments that support and sustain learning that is productive, not only for the individual, but that enables individuals to be their very best in terms of their growth potential. So you see some images there of our outdoor athletic facility, one of very few in the country. One of the benefits, of any benefits come out of COVID is that there are career paths that have come out of that experience. And one of them is to an increase in the demand for individuals who can be, who are personal trainers, who can train in outdoor facilities. And we have one of those few, one of those facilities on our campus that then trains individuals who can then go into industry, and they get jobs before they finish at the college. You, you probably know of our zoo. Moore Park College teaches zoo. Next slide, please. The zoo is not only a resource for our county, but it's also a resource really for the counties that support, that, 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 that support us and that are aligned with us. The zoo trains professionals who work in wildlife conservation. It trains professionals who work in animal care and management. It trains professionals who are doing advocacy work in terms of environmental sustainability. And what I find exciting about our zoo is that on any given day, Monday through Friday, you have about 400 youngsters from elementary schools, from high schools, from preschools in Ventura County, LA County, and Santa Barbara County. 400 on any given day. And then on the weekends, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m., you have members of the community who can use our zoo. And they come to the zoo to see the 126 animals that are on, on the eight-acre facility. And they come to our zoo to learn about sustainability. They come to our zoo to learn about careers in animal management. And so we are very proud of the fact that the zoo has increased its attendance. Next slide, please. In 2024, we had 54,135 guests. We increased our revenue to $188,982. That zoo is an auxiliary, so it does need to raise money to support itself. And we're very proud of the fact that we can combine that kind of utility with the, the high-quality education that our students get. That 25% increase in attendance is, is really the work of our campus staff and the program at the zoo who are doing outreach with community agencies, who are doing outreach with, with, with the media so that we bring people to Ventura County and they can not only spend their resources here, but they can, they can benefit from the incredible green space and the incredible community landscape that, that surrounds our county. You know that Moore Park College is in the process of raising funds to build an amphitheater. And you will see on the screen there, images from a concert that we had last year, which was dedicated to not only raising awareness and raising funds to build this 4,000-seat amphitheater. But the goal of that concert was also to show, in partnership with other arts organizations in Ventura County, the potential to build and support a high-quality arts entertainment venue that's an outdoor entertainment venue that not only adds capacity to what we have in our county, but it helps to prepare our students for careers in venue management, for, for careers in sports management, for careers in, in, in programs such as a zoo where folks learn how to utilize spaces, outdoor spaces for performance purposes. You come to college, if you're hungry, if you couldn't have a place to stay, if you're dealing with mental health imbalance issues, you cannot be successful. One of the things we're very proud of our institution is that we emphasize the ethic of care. So that on our campus, we have a Child Development Center. That's NAEYC accredited. That's one of the highest accreditations for child development centers in the nation. We have a pantry that supports food and provides food for our, our students. And you may think that we live in these wonderful communities where there may not be a, a, a visible sense of hunger and home, on-house folks, but we have students who are hungry. We have students who are on-house. And part of our responsibility as an institution is to support those students by providing services such as our basic needs center. And for those who have children, our childcare facilities. It's important for us to, for you to know who we serve, who are our students. And I make this point because our goal is the investment that the, the citizens and the community members of Ventura County put into our community college district. We want that investment to yield outcomes for the community that supports the community. So to make that, to have that happen, we need to raise all belts. We can't leave anybody on the bench. So part of our work, as individuals who are invested in human development, is to find ways in which we meet the needs of all our students. And our students are as diverse as you see on the, on the slide. We served 14,650 students from last fall. And those students come from various backgrounds. They have a, a variety of community affiliations. We have veterans. We have international students. We have students who are non-binary. We have students who come from various ethnic groups. And we have students who, by virtue of their experience, require that we provide services to them because they may be first-generation college students. There may be students who've been deal, who've been a part of the foster, foster care system. There may be students who are dealing with, with mental health challenges. And so our services are defined and targeted towards the needs of those individual students. And I'm very proud of that work, and we continue to do that work, even in the face of summer position. We also uplift the, the, the students that we serve, next slide, please, by providing services that are not only targeted and that align with the community groups and the communities that those students come from, but that those services are distributed across campus so that the student has a person when they come to Moore Park College. That person is someone who is invested in their success. That person sits them through, through gradu, through enrollment, through graduation. We do some wonderful work by connecting students through text-based text messaging system. We do some wonderful work by providing students with opportunities to engage in community-based service. We do some wonderful work by providing students with opportunities to engage in community based service. And it's really important for us to know that all our students are provided the opportunity not only to grow in their careers, but that they've learned skills that would take them through a life of success in our community. Next slide, please. So when you look at the work that we do at Moore Park College, robust career education programs, workforce development strategies that are aligned with current industry standards. We build an ecosystem of support so that we partner with businesses and industry in our service area. We create opportunities for students to work with local companies in building their own success. And we also fuel that energy and that creativity that we have students who then start their own businesses and are contributing to the success of this community. So we do that work, but we also partner with our K 12 institutions. And you will see on the next slide, the various institutions where we have dual enrollment. We know that for students to go to college, it's helpful for them to be exposed to the experience. Part of that exposure is if we start in middle school, or actually you start that experience in kindergarten. But if you start in middle school with partnerships, if you continue those partnerships in high school, if you show the partnerships that lead to careers that are in high demand and highly needing their communities, that students are apt to then follow through and jump on those career pathways. So dual enrollment is another work that we do on our campus and it allows students access so they could actually complete their high school education as well as a college degree. We bring students to campus, that's concurrent enrollment, but we also offer classes on high school campuses. And that's dual enrollment and that's work that we're incredibly proud of. We're proud of our partnerships. We have a resounding partnerships with some of the, some of the large employers in our county. And the naval base of Ventura County is one of those partnerships that I'm very proud of the work that we do. I have Lizette here who works with us in our career center. And we have built a partnership where our students who are in our computer network systems engineering program, students who are in our computer science program, students who are in our business program have the opportunity to be interns at the Navy Base. But we also have a partnership with the Navy Base where they actually support the education of our students. Right? They pay for those students who come to Moore Park College and get degrees in robotics engineering, to get degrees in business and other disciplines that will then support the economic vitality of the Navy Base, economic vitality of the businesses in our service area. We, the theme of this presentation has been, we have shared community values, we have a shared vision. And that vision allows us to move forward together in partnership with the communities that we serve, particularly in partnership with the city of Camarillo. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present to you this evening. I appreciate that opportunity and if there are any questions, I will be glad to take them.
Thank you very much, Doctor, for being here tonight and your staff and all the residents and the students that you serve. It doesn't go unnoticed. You're all doing such a great job with this. It's a great asset for Ventura County. So I'm going to ask any of my colleagues if they have any, I'm going to start off with Dr. Martita Martinez Bravo.
Thank you, Mayor and Doctor Sokuny. Thank you so much for your excellent presentation. Thank you for being here and providing this information to our entire community. And thank you for bringing your very supportive staff who are here as well. My parents only graduated up to the sixth grade in elementary school and I was the first in my family to go to college. And so we know there are many, many challenges going through that process. And in going through your demographics, I noticed that there you have quite a bit of students who are also first generation students. Can you speak to a little bit more about how, what percentage of those students are from Camarillo? If you'd have that data and also what additional supportive programs you have for first generation students?
Thank you. That's an incredible, incredible question. I don't have the data for the numbers since we're from Camarillo, but I will get that data for you and get it for the city council so you have it. I know that at our institution, about 30% of our students are first generation college students. So across institution, that's the case. One of the work, the example that I gave in terms of dual enrollment is one of the ways in which we reach out to first generation college students by working with the school district, by working with service organizations. We connect students who may not have college in their vista to the services at the college, to the courses available at the institution. Some of those are really assessments to help see how well students are prepared for college. Some of those are opportunities for them to take classes at the institution. So we work with students who are at the school age in that way. We also go into the community and give presentations around career opportunities and the gaps that are apparent and we then help match people with career programs on our campus. So very active outreach efforts. So we go to community events. So we do that work. We have in terms of our partnership with businesses, the opportunities to reach out to individuals who are working in the businesses who may not necessarily see themselves as college material. They may have some college classes, they may have a high school diploma, but they don't see themselves going further. And in our, in our interactions with those businesses, we have a job specialist who goes into the community, who goes into businesses and helps people see how Moore Park College can assist them as they grow in their own professional development, as they grow in their goals to build wealth and capital and resources for their families.
Thank you so much. And piggyback on that question, for a dual enrollment, I didn't see Camarillo High School or maybe I missed it with other Oxnard Unified.
So they're working with Oxnard Unified. We are very much sort of where our focus is on a sense of a district that's distributed so that each of our colleges work with the schools that are in our service area, but we also work with schools who are outside of our service area. So we will, you will see Moore Park College offering classes for students in Santa Paula and Oxnard College offering students for students in Camarillo. We do have a partnership with the Disabled Adults Program in the school, in the, in the, in the high schools in Camarillo. So with Camp High as well as with Rancho Campania. And we do work with those so that if you look at our disabled students program, we have a lot of students who come out of the service area that's at Camarillo. But that is the one area where we are building our capacity. Our sister colleges are also building that capacity to serve the schools in the Camarillo area. Our music program is another area. We have a music technology program and we have a considerable amount of students who come from Rancho Campania to Moore Park College for that particular program. Similarly, our forensics program, we bring students come specifically for that program at all ages.
Thank you so much. And last question, one of the barriers too for students is some students have to work in order to survive. And do you know, or can you speak to any opportunities for paid internships, which sometimes just make a difference between making it or not?
Yes. One of, one of the goals that we've had over the last couple of years is to really grow the paid internship opportunities for our students. When we looked at the data of who was benefiting from internships at Moore Park College, and actually this is part of national data, the students who tended to participate in internships, where students who often come from middle class families who have a college going culture already, they tended to be students who already have some connection to that industry. And they, they tended to be male students versus female students. So part of the work that we wanted to do at Moore Park College through our career center is to find opportunities for more paid internships. Thank you to Congressman Julia Brownlee. As in our partnership with her office, we've gotten about half a million dollars to actually support paid internships so that that allocation comes to us and then we pay local businesses to take our students as interns to help them develop the work based learning opportunities that is essential to their career success. And so we've been expanding that. What we saw as gender differences, what we saw in terms of our students of color participating in internships, which was problematic and challenging. So we've worked towards that. We're beginning to close that gap. So we are paying specific attention to the resources that are available to students who are, may not necessarily have the, the time or the resources to volunteer as interns. And if anything, we're actually trying to move most of our internships to paid internships and fewer unpaid internships or supporting the businesses so they can pay our students.
Great. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Ms. Tremblay?
Oh, I'm being told one out of, one out of 10 students comes from Camarillo. So 10% of Moore Park College students comes out of Camarillo.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you for pulling that data.
Thank you. Ms. Tremblay?
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor, for a very good presentation. And Councilmember Martinez Bravo and I share some characteristics. I was the first one in my family to graduate from college. I was going to follow up on the Camarillo High School because there are so many students from Camarillo High School that go to Moore Park. Specifically, I was just puzzled by the fact that there is not a dual enrollment scenario there. And so I wanted to, and I have some really nice things to say about Moore Park College in a minute. So don't misinterpret my question. But why is it that there is not a dual enrollment program with Oxnard Union High School District?
So Oxnard Union High School District has a dual enrollment program, a robust one with the, with, with schools in Oxnard and with schools in Camarillo. What they do, that's Oxnard College. We, we are very aware of the geographical location. And so we work within, within that context so that our sister college can, can support the needs of Camarillo. But when there are programs, and a good example is our access program, where there are programs where, and the music program is another one of those, where there is a need to meet the demands of students who go to Camarillo High School or to Rancho Campania, we are there. We have a counselor who is located, actually Oxnard College, has a counselor who's located at Camarillo High School as well as at Rancho Campania. And they tell us that, you know, they recommend and they direct a lot of students to Moore Park College because there are students who live closer to Moore Park College than they do to Oxnard or Ventura. So we know that we're working together as a college district to meet the needs, the education needs of students at Camarillo High School and the Oxnard Union High School District.
Now, that's a great answer and I recognize that you've got the chancellor sitting behind you too, who's responsible for all three campuses. Particularly given the majors and the baccalaureate degrees that you're going toward. You have many, many Camarillo students who are focused in that area. And I don't know whether, and there's no disrespect intended to Oxnard College at all, but I don't know that they have those majors. So that's why I'm, I really was not intending to put you on the spot, but focused on that. If I could just make a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. So I'm a fan, a big fan of both the Ventura County Community College District as a whole, together with C S U Channel Islands. And when I look at your presentation, which is very well done, it's, this, it's not theoretical to me at all. I'm not surprised to see an enrollment increase of 5% at Moore Park College. I have firsthand family experience from one of our kids who is now an adult, out on his own, off mom and dad's payroll, who received an excellent quality of education at Moore Park, as well as Ventura, by the way, I will say he went to both Moore Park and Ventura before he matriculated to a four year school. And the reason for that, and I wanted to say this publicly, is because of the, particularly for Moore Park, is because of the welcoming nature of the faculty and the staff and the guidance counselors who his mom and I thought went above and beyond to make him feel welcome. So if there are high school students who are out there thinking, gosh, should I go to Moore Park? Putting aside the dual enrollment issue, which I haven't given up on yet, by the way. But if, I would say to them unhesitatingly, go to Moore Park because it's such an outstanding school. I know that you are dedicated to advancing students. I know that you are dedicated to advancing higher education. The community college district as a whole, and I want to make sure your chancellor knows that, Rick, you know, and I, and I've said this publicly, that the district is doing a great job for our community. But I am, I am a Moore Park College fan. And I want to say the importance of the direct matriculation to four year schools can't be understated. So when our youngest looked at going to either UCSB or Cal State Long Beach, now this is back a few years ago, so I'm not quite sure what your direct matriculations are at this point. And of course, his parents were UC graduates, but you know, he ended up going to C S U L B and very happy about it. But he went in and it was seamless because of the education and the support that he received at Moore Park and at Ventura as well. So I just wanted to compliment you. The whole reason for this, and thank you for letting me speak to you a few minutes, is this ain't theoretical. This is practical and this is, and the reason you are having, the reason you're seeing an enrollment increase and the reason you're seeing students succeed is because of the quality of the education they're getting at Moore Park. So sorry to be so ambivalent about that. But anyway, wanted to take a couple of minutes.
Thank, thank you very much.
Doctor.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Susan first.
Susan, would you like to go first?
Doctor Sokuny.
Next, I'm saying.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I appreciate your time and bringing your staff with you. I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. It was chock full of information. And thank you for the work that you do every day. And I look forward to our continuing collaboration with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Councilmember.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Thank you, Doctor. Excellent presentation sharing the successes of Moore Park College. You touched on an issue of some importance to me. I serve pleasureably with R D P and I had the opportunity to hear you and your two fellow college presidents present to us two months ago. Naval bases Ventura County is the largest single employer with 24,000 employees that support our military bases and only 4,000 of them are uniformed personnel. The rest are civilian employees and many of them are very high paying jobs in the engineering centers. What career pathways, not just Moore Park College, but maybe the whole district, what career pathways are you preparing our young people for from Ventura County so they can stay in Ventura County and use the talents and education you provide them?
Excellent question and thank you very much, Vice Mayor Tennyson. It was a pleasure and an honor to speak to R D P 21 and see the energy and the investment in partnering with our college district in success of the Navy Base and to support the workforce needs of the Navy Base. So when you asked the question about the pathways, and I'll list a few pathways so that folks hear that. So I know that, you know, Mechatronics and Mechatronics is a combination of computer science and robotics. We have programs in logistics at Oxnard College. We have programs in diesel and auto mechanics at Ventura, Ventura College. We have at Moore Park College, programs in business. We have programs at Moore Park College in cybersecurity. My V Ps are here, so they could probably tell you some of the programs that we have. And the focus for us as a college district, but also as an institution is degrees that, that get people into jobs, that give them a pathway to scaffolding and moving up the career path, the career ladder. They're degrees that are in much demand in Ventura County. And they're degrees that we know, we want folks to stay in Ventura County. We know that there are folks who are place bound. But we also know that there are folks who will go elsewhere in the world and that they can take those degrees and work anywhere. And we prepare them for that, for that. Electrical engineering is another one of the degrees that we work on. The childhood education is another degree that, that we know that there's need for. What am I?
What else am I forgetting?
Engineering, engineering tech, engineering tech. So those are some of, those are some of the degrees. And the, really, there is a commitment on the part of the various NAVC and the various NAVS at the base to work with us so that their faculty are in our programs, our computer science program, our engineering program has faculty from the Navy Base who are not only incredible supporters of our students, but they have a worldview that some of our students don't have and they bring that to the classroom experience that our students have. We have a comprehensive work through the workforce division at our college district that is partnering and connecting not only with the Navy Base, but we're connecting with companies like Meisner. We're connecting, and those companies provide success and support for folks in our community. And so as we do partner with the Navy Base and as we do partner with city agencies, I'm very proud of the work we do with municipal agencies, by the way, with the sheriff's department and others and school districts. All of that builds not only capacity, but it helps to retain people in our community. And, and that is one thing that we are committed to as an institution to help build capacity and wealth in our community.
Thank you. I just know from the various command reports each month at R D P, they speak very highly of the relationship between the entire college district and the bases. And they also speak very highly of the they also speak very highly of the success of people staying employed with them after they've gone through an internship program. And that's very important. I want to throw out a number, like 90%, and the chancellor can correct me if I'm wrong, 90% of the interns that get exposure to naval bases Ventura County and the various commands stay there. And that's really important, that we keep our local people local so that they provide for us old people as time goes on. So, thank you, and thank you, Chancellor, for everything that the college district is doing, and your participation and your staff's participation. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else with any comments? Dr. Julius, I want to thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
As you can tell, and your staff here, that this council and residents of Camarillo are very passionate about education, and this particular point, the higher education, and all of you are always welcome here. Again, thank you very much for taking time out of your busy schedule to be here.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's going to get us down to the consent calendar. Before we get down to that, I'm going to ask if there's any members of the public that want to comment on anything that's on the consent calendar. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to ask if there's any questions from my colleagues up here on the consent calendar. Any questions?
Mayor, I, I don't have questions, but would it be okay if we take a short break before moving on?
Sure. Let's see, how about a five-minute break going to work for you?
Sounds good.
Okay, so with that, we'll be back in five minutes, and we're at recess. I'm going to reconvene the city council meeting, and again, I'll ask on consent calendar, if there's any member of the public would like to make any comments on the consent calendar. So, with that, I'm going to ask if there's any questions of the city council on the consent at this particular time.
Move approval.
I can second.
There is a motion to second. Would you please do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Trembley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kilday.
Yes. Okay, so with that, we get up to a discussion item with the city council. It's the fiscal year 2025-26 preliminary budget update and economic report, and I'm going to ask our Director of Finance, Mark Uribe. Would you like to start us off tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This will be a two-part presentation, starting with an update of the city's budget development process, and then it'll be followed by Jason Schmidt from Chandler Asset Management, the city's investment advisors, for an economic update. Each year, the city of Camarillo puts together a budget. The city's fiscal year is July 1 through June 30. The budget development process starts in January, February, with a mid-year review of the current fiscal year's budget. That's an opportunity to adjust for any changes in, in conditions, any changes in council goals, objectives, or activities. We can adjust the budget at any time through the year, but the mid-year budget review is the formal process that we review the budget. That also becomes the kickoff or the foundation for looking at next fiscal year's budget. So, in the budget development process for next fiscal year, fiscal year 25-26, we look at two components primarily, revenue projections and expenditure requests from the departments. And we have department meetings, all in an effort to come up with a balanced budget to propose to the city council at the budget workshop, scheduled for June 4. We also do a budget adoption then in June, whether that be the, the first, second, first meeting or second meeting in June for the adoption. So, in budget development, there are two main components we look at. First side is the revenues. Focusing on the general fund where the majority of the city's activities are recorded, general fund revenues are primarily sales tax and property tax are the two big ones, followed by transient occupancy tax, and all three of those are subject to economic conditions. Talking about economic conditions, I think you can summarize it with one word right now, uncertainty. The, there had been an existing slowdown heading into 2025, even before the current administration got into Washington DC. Now, what we've seen in the last couple of months is tariff wars and inflationary concerns, all leading to concerns in consumer confidence. And when we listen to different economic forecasts, different economic advisors, there's a consensus that there's a slowing economy and a more cautious consumer spending into this next year. What are the impacts to Camarillo? As I mentioned, sales tax and property tax, the two largest revenues, are now projected to be flattening or even a slight decline, as opposed to a historical increase, a curve of maybe 3% to 4% increases per year. So, what do we do when we're putting our budget together and we don't really have as much control over the revenues and the economic conditions? We focus on the general fund expenditure side. When we're looking at expenditures and developing expenditure budgets, city council goals and objectives are the primary focus. We develop programs and expenditures to meet those goals and objectives, activities to meet those goals and objectives. We hold department meetings, meetings with the city manager, where we look at the expenditures based on the revenue projections that we have and our resources, and we have much more control in setting expenditure side of the budget. We adjust to achieve a balanced budget where operating revenues meet or exceed operating expenditures. So, we talked about the revenue side, the expenditure side. One other factor we want to make sure we address is the city's fiscal health. We have very healthy general fund reserves. We're well positioned to withstand any potential recession. We have upcoming renew revenue streams that are expected to offset the economic slowdown. As I mentioned, we will continue to do cost control measures to monitor expenditures, all in the attempt to, again, propose a balanced budget at the June 4 budget workshop. So, that's a summary of the budget development process that we're in the middle of right now. Next step will be a June 4 workshop, and I will pause for any questions before Jason comes up.
Any questions? I don't believe we have any. Mark, proceed, please.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Welcome to our new council chambers.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
It's beautiful. It's nice to see everybody. We're going to talk a little bit about the economy, and so we're going to move to the first slide here and talk about just what's been going on with trade developments and also what's been going on with the markets in general. So, we had April 2nd, seems like a long time ago, where we had the large traded, trade tariff announcement by the Trump administration. That definitely did royal markets. It also did royal, just, you know, if you think about it, just all the overall trade relationships that we have. And, and with that, with the rolling of the, of the financial markets, we did see a pause on April 9. And so, pausing this for 90 days, and also, there are some negotiations that are taking place even as we speak with the different trading partners. Then on April 11th, we had some exemptions. So, there were some exemptions for certain types of products and things like that, that would not be impacted by the tariffs. And then as we kind of moved our way through this timeline, let's talk about April 10th through the 15th, basically, we had China have some retaliatory measures to the initial tariffs that we proposed. Also, the US has begun really to have some trade negotiation with the European Union, Canada, Japan, and also other trading partners. Looking ahead, markets are likely to remain attuned to, to upcoming policy developments, and with that, trade negotiations and implementation of any new tariff measures that may happen. And then also, the direct, direction of, of future exemptions, maybe responses to major trading partners, and the progress of any of those talks will be key factors. And I'll go through some graphics that will show you just kind of what happened over this period of time, and also how the economy was looking prior to this period. Remember that many of the economic numbers that you're hearing about today, actually, they take those surveys and things like that in the month of March, and so this was before any of the tariff measures were out there. This is looking at the employment. So, this is going to get the unemployment rate. So, that green line there is the headline number. That's the number that you typically will hear when you're looking at different news. Then you have the dash line there is what we call the underemployment rate. So, those are those folks that might be working part-time that would like to be working full-time. And so, you can see more recently, if you look towards the very end of that graph, you can see how things had started to tick up a little bit. We have an unemployment rate today, a headline rate of around 4.2%. This is something that we'll be watching closely, in the sense that if we are starting to see some slowing of the economy, slowing of manufacturing and things like that, that is definitely going to be caught up in this number. We will get the next number as far as the employment number. That will be in the first week of May, and that employment number will cover the month of April. And so, we'll get kind of our first read of if, if there are any impacts, and definitely, the employment situation, one of those key things that, to keep in mind as it will impact consumers, which make up 2/3 of the overall consumption in the United States. Looking at inflation, so inflation has definitely come off of its highs, and what you can see is a graph going back to March of 2020. That green line is the year-over-year change in the CPI or Consumer Price Index. That dash line is what we call the core index. It excludes food and energy. And what you can see is that basically, we had the highs back in 2022 on a year-over-year basis, you know, got very close to that 9% level. Since that period of time, it has been coming down. And with that, we've actually seen the Federal Reserve also lower interest rates over that period of time because inflation is subdued. There is a lot of talk today about whether the tariffs will be inflationary. Chances are, they are going to be inflationary in some way, shape, or form, if they are to, to be implemented in the state, in the state that there have been outlaid today. But what I would say is, we're not going to go back to the 9% inflation on a year-over-year basis. I would say that we're likely to see maybe a little bit of an uptick in that inflationary rate for a small period of time. Maybe it gets from where it is today of around 3%, maybe goes 3.2, 3.3, something like that. But chances are, we're not going to see a big inflation bout from that. So, that is, that has been our view as far as when we're looking at the, the overall inflation rate related to the tariffs. Looking at housing, of course, and so when you're looking at housing, this is, of course, the most recent numbers that we have back in February 2025. This is a national level, and what you can see there is those green bars. There are single-family homes. The gray lines, there are multifamily homes. And you can see that basically, it's, it's leveled off here. We did see a little bit of an uptick in the month of January. I know it's hard for us to believe in Southern California, but back east, they have some pretty big storms. And when that happens, basically, construction starts to slow down. And what you have seen from that uptick is where we had basically a slowing down of construction because of weather. Now, they've had better weather over there, so definitely, construction has picked up. But we do not see a big material increase in overall housing starts. And so, you know, one of the things that the tariffs may impact this is the price of houses. And we could see where those would go up and put some pressure on that. We actually already see a lot of that in Southern California with the recent fires that we've had. We've seen definitely the prices push up in the outlying areas, and so we've started to see some of that just in general. Then you have financial markets. One of the ones that we see, an industrial average that we see that's, measures stock prices is the Dow Jones Industrial Average. This is just going back to the beginning of the year, and this shows you just how much the Dow Industrial Average has fallen over that period of time since the implementation and announcement of some of those tariffs. So, it was around at 45,000 was its level. Its level now went down to, all, all the way down to 38,000. We did see over the last couple of days where the, it has actually gone up. We're pretty close to around 40,000 when I left today. I will say that it's been a very volatile market. You can see there, those are the daily changes that are happening within the market. So, definitely, the markets are reacting to this new information, and that information is coming out at a, at a very accelerated rate than the markets are used to. And so, you're seeing a lot of just different volatility that's coming into the markets. Our expectation is that we'll continue to see this volatility, because we do have a, a lot of uncertainty, as Mark mentioned before, as far as looking at the overall tariffs and what, how those may actually ultimately be implemented in the economy. Looking at your strategy for the portfolio, first of all, we're committed to preserving liquidity. liquidity. So as we work our way through these changes that are happening, the portfolio has a lot of liquidity, so it's able to facilitate your goals through that. Also actively managing risk in the portfolio. So it's a very safe portfolio. The portfolio is doing exactly what it should be doing today. I showed you the stock market. Remember that you met, your, your portfolio is in the bond market. And the bond market is much more secure in the sense that there's been very little movement in the overall value of the portfolio, which is exactly what it's supposed to do. Remember, its primary tenants are safety, liquidity, and then finally yield. Then the final thing is really ensuring the alignment of the long-term objectives with the shifting market environment. And so this is something that we are working with staff on an ongoing basis with the portfolio as there are funds to be invested and also liquidity that is potentially needed and ensuring that the investments are made with those long-term objectives in mind. And so the last comment I want to leave you with is that the portfolio is secure. It is not having the same kind of volatility that you may be seeing in the stock market and things like that, and that's by design. And that's by design, meaning that the portfolio is supposed to be a very solid and stable investment for the city in order to achieve its long-term goals. And with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Yes, we'll start with Vice Mayor Tennyson.
Thanks, Jason. So just to iterate for the community, our invested funds, be it with Leif or through Chandler Investments, are on very sound footing. And that's largely because of the city's investment policy and laws that dictate where we can put our money.
That is correct.
And most of our money is in the bond market. Very little is in stocks or securities, correct?
There is zero amount of money that the city has that is in stock. It is 100% in bonds and/or fixed income-related investments.
And our investment strategy is on a zero-to-five-year timeline. We never invest in anything beyond 60 months, correct?
Absolutely correct.
And the overwhelming majority of our investments are on a much, much shorter timeline, correct?
Correct. If you think about the average maturity of your portfolio is typically less than one year. So we can buy securities that are further out, but the average is less than one year.
And, and, and that strategy was to take advantage of the bond market where we had the inversion, where shorter-term bonds were paying more dividends than the longer-term bonds?
That is correct.
Have we seen that change then in the last six months where the longer-term bonds are returning more?
Yes, we're starting to see where longer-term bonds have higher yields, and we take that appropriate action with recommendations with staff in order to move those funds when, when we believe that it presents an opportunity.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments at this point? I have one question. So the bond market, do you look at any changes in the bond market going forward with that?
I had a comment, but I can wait.
I'll get to you in a second here.
So what we do think is that the Federal Reserve is likely to lower interest rates this year. And so in 2025, we think that it's likely to be one, more, more likely, two times this year, 25 basis points apiece. And the reason why we think that is the economy was already slowing previously to this. And so we think that with that, I showed you the inflation figures that we've had more recently, and that really is allowing them to lower interest rates. And so they're likely to do that. We think the first chance of that happening is in their June meeting and then the subsequent meeting, maybe that's in September, that they potentially would lower rates by another 25 basis points.
Okay. Thank you. Marti had a question, please.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm very glad to hear that our investments are in a safe space, although unfortunately I don't think that's what it's like for many people and many other businesses. I'm a, a part of Economic Development Collaborative and there, EDC, and there was a recent meeting, and one of our staff members was able to attend, and I asked for a summary. There was a roundtable discussion of local businesses and how that, the tariffs are impacting their businesses. And so what I wanted to do is, Rachel, if that's okay, I can forward that to ORT to get to council.
Yes.
Okay. And just to go over some of that, for international travel, travel into the US from international markets is down significantly, further affecting tourism and related sectors. For the banking sector, financial institutions are seeing increased demand for letters of credit, again tied to marketing uncertainty. Consumer pricing behavior, businesses are stockpiling goods in anticipation of future price hikes. For example, hotel developers are buying appliances and furniture in bulk now. Residential real estate, some buyers had to drop out of escrow because their down payments were tied to market-dependent investment funds that have taken a hit. And the list kind of goes on, and then some examples of local businesses is like Haas Automation. The tariffs, tariffs actually put them at a disadvantage to competition in Taiwan. The source key components and materials like cast iron exclusively from China, these tariffs will significantly impact their operations, and the list kind of goes on. But, you know, what we're really seeing is, is an unfortunate impact locally as well, and I just wanted to share that with our council.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Jason, it's always a pleasure to see you. Thank you so much. I look forward to this meeting. You come and address not only council but our residents here, and very outstanding to know that our investments are extremely sound and very safe. So again, I want to thank you very much for, for being here tonight with us.
Great. Thank you very much, and thanks for having me.
Thank you. Mark, is there anything else you need to add to anything? All right. I'm going to ask the clerk, do we have any public comments on this particular item that you're aware of?
No.
No public comments? All right. So I believe that we do, do need to, a motion to approve this. Is there someone?
It's a receive and file.
Can we just receive and file this? Okay, we'll receive and file this one then. All right. So that's going to get us down to our first public hearing tonight, and it's the draft fiscal year 2025-26 to 2930 Consolidated Plan for a Community Development Block Grant Program and the Draft 2526 Action Plan and Supporting Documents. I'm going to ask Mr. Sanchez, are you going to start us off tonight?
Yes, I'll provide a brief introduction. So thank you, Mayor and council members. The next item, as you mentioned, is the Countywide Five-Year Consolidated Plan and the City's Annual Action Plan. These plans are required for federal community development block grant, block grant funding, and the presentation will be given by Mr. David Munoz of MDG Associates, Inc., and Mr. James Fowler, the senior planner. And with that, I'll pass it to Mr. Munoz for the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council. Appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to present on the 25 through 29 Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan. Since I know this is everybody's favorite topic on a Wednesday at 7:30 PM, I'll do my best to keep it brief and as entertaining as a federal document can be. So to start us off, why are we here? The city receives an annual allocation of community development block grant, or CDBG funds, as they're known, on an annual basis from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The CDBG program is primarily intended to benefit low and moderate income residents. But in order to continue receiving these funds, as it was just mentioned, the city is required to prepare what is known as a consolidated plan. This plan in particular was a regional effort. So the city partnered with the county of Antura and various other neighboring cities, including Oxnard, City of Antura, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks, to then develop a shared strategy and vision for what the high priority housing and community development needs are and what the strategies are to address them. In a nutshell, that consolidated plan is a five-year blueprint that really outlines how the city intends to invest this limited source of federal funds to address those high priority needs. So diving a little bit deeper into what the consolidated plan is and how this five-year investment strategy was developed, it's really a process. And that process includes an evaluation of various qualitative information as well as an analysis of quantitative data, and then combining both of those elements to inform and develop that five-year investment strategy. So as you can see on the screen here, there's a variety of community engagement methods that were taken. There's also a, which is kind of the qualitative efforts. There's also a needs assessment and market analysis where we dive into the data and do some of that quantitative analysis. And then based on the conclusions and findings from all of that feedback, we then develop a strategic plan. And that strategic plan is really where the city is kind of laying out, this is how much, you know, what are our priority needs? How much CDBG funds will be allocated to each one of those needs? And what are the measurable goals that we want to hold ourselves accountable to? And it's not just us, but also HUD will therefore, you know, hold the city accountable to that as well. So to highlight some of the qualitative data that was used to inform the strategic plan and the consolidated plan, you'll notice that here we've highlighted some of those efforts. And I really think that that's one of the neat things about the consolidated plan is that it does really promote community engagement and fostering a bottom-up approach rather than a strictly top-down one, which is a little bit counterintuitive with a lot of federal programs. And so as part of that process, we facilitated 11 community meetings, had three stakeholder sessions, and those were really opportunities for residents, service providers, as well as other key representatives to tell us, you know, what are, what are the greatest needs in the city of Camarillo? And that pie chart, I know it may be a little bit small for you all to see, but that is representative of the survey results. So we not only had in-person and online meetings, but for those that didn't have the opportunity to participate in that, they could have also completed this survey. And you'll notice that on that pie chart, there's really four slices that take up a majority of that pie. The orange, the gray, the green, and the brown. And so the orange as well as the gray are both related to housing type needs, whether it's construction or rehabilitation of housing or housing type services. The green and brown are related to public services and homeless services. And we really wanted to highlight this because oftentimes, you know, folks think, oh, I just wasted my time, provided you my feedback, you're not going to listen to me, you're just going to do what you're going to do. But this chart, I hope everybody remembers it because once we dive into what the city, you know, proposed as its priority needs and goals, you'll notice that there's a lot of similarity there in terms of what is being prioritized. So then while qualitative data and information is, is useful, it's always good to, to kind of check the, the data and the statistics to see if it lines up with what we're hearing from the residents. And so for the next couple of slides, we'll, we'll kind of take you through a snapshot of some of the, the quantitative data that, that was evaluated and analyzed. So on this first slide, it provides you just a demographic snapshot. What is the population, the total number of households, and the HUD area median family income throughout the county? A question that we often get is, well, what is the HUD area median family income? Well, if you recall, when we started the presentation, the CDBG program is intended to primarily benefit low and moderate income residents. Question you always get is, well, what does that mean? And for HUD, it means any household that is at or below 80% of the area median income. So that figure of $125,600 is representative of a household of four being at that 80% limit. So if you're a household of four earning that much, you qualify to participate and be assisted through these programs. The figure or that you see kind of on the right side of the screen breaks down the total number of households by each of the HUD income levels. So the very light blue all the way on the left is households that are considered extremely low income or 0 to 30% of AMI. Orange is low income and gray is moderate income. Those that go beyond that, like the gold and the dark blue, are really kind of outside of the range of the CDBG program. But a key takeaway, I think, from this chart is oftentimes folks think, well, this is only intended to help low and moderate income folks, so it probably won't be able to benefit a lot of our residents. And this graphic begs to differ. It demonstrates that nearly half of the residents are eligible for this assistance and would qualify under these programs, which I think just really highlights the value and the impact that these funds can have in your community. Next, since a lot of the, the qualitative feedback and, and, you know, surveys focused on housing affordability and, and housing needs, we wanted to, to highlight a, a couple key elements here. And there's a couple sobering images here. So the, the one on the left shows the change in the median rent, which is the light green line, as well as the change in household income. I'm sure it comes to no surprise to anyone that the cost of housing has risen faster than incomes have risen. Whereas about 10 years ago, it was, there was some parity there. Over the past 10 years, the cost of rent has increased nearly 50%. Whereas household incomes, even though they have increased, they have not kept pace. They've really only increased 40%. So now you have a gap of 10%, whereas 10 years ago, you didn't really see that as much. The graphic on the right just represents the number of full-time minimum wage jobs that are needed to afford a market-rate rental in the county while avoiding being cost burdened. So what does that mean? That means this is how many minimum wage jobs you need to work to not spend more than 30% of your income on housing costs. It's kind of the standard that, that HUD utilizes. So for a one-bedroom unit, I believe you need 3.9 jobs. One-bedroom unit average rent last year was about 2.2,000. And so in order to afford that and spend less than 30% of your income, three minimum wage jobs needed, basically. For a two-bedroom unit, average rent last year was about 2.8,000, and that one is 3.7 jobs, so nearly four. And then for a three-bedroom unit, you really see a jump there where average rent was 3.8,000 and nearly five jobs, five minimum wage jobs needed to afford that without being cost burdened. And when you kind of take the combination of, of these two, the, the big takeaway is, you know, housing costs are soaring without an end in sight, and incomes are not increasing at the same level. And this is obviously going to affect those that are primarily working in minimum wage jobs and that are primarily renters. So what do we do about this situation? Based on all of the information and data that, that was collected and assessed, the city highlighted 11 needs that it would like to address over the course of the next five years. Those needs were then kind of divided between higher priority needs and lower priority needs. In the higher needs category, there's seven of those 11, and you'll notice that the first three, four are all related to housing. So if you recall, the orange slice and the gray slice of that pie chart in terms of the survey results were all related to housing needs, that is reflected here. The last two, which is homeless, supportive services, and fair housing services, are the other two biggest slices of that pie, that green slice and the brown slice. The lower needs is not to say that these aren't things that the city wouldn't like to do, but rather with the limited funds that are available, should, you know, funds, more funds become available, these are more funds become available, these are other options and areas where it could focus those resources. And so to kind of put this decision-making process into context, this slide shows you the anticipated resources. So over the next five years, the city anticipates receiving $1.9 million from HUD, or of CDBG dollars. And so when faced with $1.9 million over five years, or about $350,000 annually, you know, you can't solve every problem in the world, and so you had to make tough decisions. And fortunately, the city's decisions in terms of the priority needs aligned with the, the resident feedback and aligned with the statistics that we saw as part of that needs assessment and market analysis. So to address those seven high-priority needs, the city established four strategic-plan goals. The primary goal, or the first one, is to improve the supply of affordable housing, and this would be done through a variety of rehabilitation or preservation-type activities. And over the course of five years, the city would like to invest $250,000 to rehabilitate The second goal is to increase and improve social services, and that includes a range of public services. So it could be senior services, youth programs, food pantries, all geared towards assisting low- and moderate-income residents. And over the course of five years, the city estimates that approximately 1,495 residents would be assisted through the investment of a little over $285,000. Then the third goal is to continue its work towards ending homelessness in partnership with, with the county's continuum of care and engaging in a variety of strategies to, to address this issue, whether that is emergency shelter, other types of housing solutions paired with necessary and critical wraparound services to make sure that folks have the support systems needed to be able to, to achieve stability. And over the course of the five-year period, the city anticipates or proposes to invest approximately $1 million. And as a result of that investment, 30 overnight shelter beds will be available, and then the creation of 10 additional transitional housing beds would be added to the inventory. And then fourth, and finally, is the effective administration of the program. A good plan is great, but all of it can fall apart without good management. And so as part of the, the HUD requirements, there's a lot of compliance, regulatory compliance that goes along with it, including a lot of paperwork. And so to ensure that the ship is sailing as smooth as possible, that portion of funds has been set aside for each of the program years. And then last, but certainly not least, is the analysis of impediments. This, again, was, was a regional document that was prepared to analyze a variety of barriers that may exist to accessing housing, and then developing strategies to overcome those, those obstacles or those hurdles in a way that aligns and that is consistent with the city's already adopted housing element. As of, yeah, as of February of '24, HUD does not require the city to, to officially submit it to HUD. However, the city is still required to complete it as part of its, you know, compliance with the state of California and as part of its housing element. So this just enables the city to kind of keep on track and continue progress towards addressing those barriers. And with that, I'll hand the mic off.
Thank you, David. Going into the fiscal year '25-'26 annual action plan itself, it was developed as part of the consolidated plan. It's year one of the consolidated plan. The city expects to receive approximately $350,000 in funding for this allocation. We'll know for certain in mid-May. And then we have, we, we know we have $159,000 in program income to use next year as well. That totals an approximate $509,000. The allocations will then be adjusted when we know our actual allocation in mid-May pursuant to the contingency plan that's included as Appendix A to the action plan. A little bit of a summary, 50 local nonprofits were notified of the opportunity to apply for CDBG funds. Only six ended up applying, and tonight we are recommending funding for all six. You can see on this chart the proposed funding. A little bit of a, you know, summary is the proposed funding levels are made up of public services, capital projects, and administration. Based on HUD rules, there are limits to what you can spend where, so a maximum of 15% of entitlement funds and program in, well, you can only spend 15% of your total allocation and program income on public services, 20% on administration, and then the rest, capital projects. The proposed funding includes six nonprofit organizations, like I said, the administration of the program itself, and then funding for the temporary homes acquisition program. And you can see the recommendations included in the agenda report on this slide, and staffer are available for any questions.
All right. Are there any questions of staff or, yes, Maritza?
Thank you so much to the both of you for the presentation. If you go back a slide, just the one that we were just reviewing, just a quick question on the maximum number of entitlement, is that a product of the evaluation? Like what program needs, you know, what type of funding?
Well, so the, for instance, I think what you're referring to there specifically is where it says max 15% of entitlement and program income. So we get a certain amount each year, and for public services, we can use a combination of 15% of what we get per year plus 15% of our program income to get that public services number. And so each year, we use that full 15%, or that's what we've done historically, because we, we want to fund the public services as much as we can. Similarly, for administration, we're capped at 20%. And then capital projects, we could go up to 100% in capital projects if we wanted to, but we like to use the, we've historically liked to use the public services and administration money the city has.
Okay. So those caps on those percentages are policy-related to the, to HUD?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And then just the other question that I had was, do you, have you heard or do you foresee any threats from the federal government to, for any type of funding?
Well, we know that 84, well, they, they say 84% of the staff that run the office that administrates CDBG are, they, they're planning to cut them. As far as the actual CDBG funding that we get, nothing direct as of yet. I, I think very likely we will get somewhat of a lesser allocation next year than we got last year, but we're not certain what the number will be, though we will know in mid-May.
So if there's a proposed 84% of staff who may potentially be cut, what would the repercussions be in terms of getting access to information and all of that?
Well, I, I think it would be a bit slower. You know, I, I'm sure a, a reduction in that level will mean a slower response to emails if we have questions, or if we submit something, it, it probably will be slower.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Yes, Vice Mayor Tennyson. Comments or questions?
Quick question. These numbers in the proposed funding are based on the expected receipt of that dollar amount for CDBG, correct?
Yes, we know 100% what our program income is, because we've received it. As for what our allocation is, we're using last year's as, last year as a benchmark, but we will not know until mid-May what our allocation actually is.
So is this grand total of 509, $509,000, could it be lower?
Yes.
So we're going to take an action tonight authorizing these amounts, knowing full well that it could be lower or less?
Yes, we have a contingency plan in place that basically outlines what gets less, you know, what, where we're taking money from. So what that looks like essentially is, all of our public services are dropped proportionally at the same level, you know, based on if we get less money, they're dropped proportionally. Administration has dropped proportionally. The temporary homes acquisition program, everything is dropped proportionally with the exception of the Habitat Home Repair Program and the Fair Housing Program. The reason those two, we were saying we want to keep static is, for instance, for Habitat Home Repair, if we drop it too much, the feasibility of doing any repairs starts to not work. And then for the Fair Housing Program, they actually have like a set price they give us for those fair housing services, so we, those would remain static.
So in the staff recommended actions, there is no verbiage in there that addresses the automatic cutbacks if we get less than we anticipate?
There, there is in the form of the contingency plan, which is a part and appendix of the action plan.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time? I just have one question, the $350,000. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how did we get to that? Is that from kind of, we've kind of been very close to that for quite a while now. Is that how you got basically to that number?
Yeah, it's the $350,000, it's $350,107. It's exactly what we got last year. So because we really have no true indication what our exact number will be, we always tend to use last year as a benchmark, and then we adopt a contingency plan in this sort of interim period to plan for, you know, some years we, we get more, you know, some years we get less. This year, I suspect, we'll get less, but that contingency plan allows us to meet the, the deadlines to get this plan into HUD, but also be flexible based on what, what actually transpires in terms of the amount of funding we get.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is an advertised public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to ask Clerk, would you like to announce any speakers?
I do have one person on the list that would speak, Kirsten Rizik. If you could come up to the public podium, you have three minutes to speak.
Hello.
Thank you.
My name is Kirsten Rizik. I'm from Turning Point.
If you could push that right there, thank you.
Is that better?
Better.
There we go, okay. I'm from Turning Point Foundation, which is a nonprofit in Ventura County, offering mental health services, a variety of mental health services. And I just wanted to thank the city for its commitment to assisting the homeless, including subpopulations such as those with mental illness. We are appreciative of the city's support through CDBG and otherwise. Turning Point Foundation's emergency shelter, Our Place Safe Haven, serves an average of 55 to 70 persons per year in the overnight shelter program, including homeless, homeless individuals from Camarillo. Our Place Safe Haven additionally serves around 250 annually through drop-in day services. We continue to find that the most successful approach decreasing homelessness in Ventura County is through important programs such as emergency shelters and other homelessness programs that offer wraparound or supportive services, such as housing navigation, health navigation, and case management, to ensure that people have the resources to find and retain permanent housing after being sheltered. These services include mental health services, substance abuse treatment, arranging or providing transportation to important appointments, education services, life skills, employment assistance, referrals to legal services, assistance with benefits enrollments, and housing navigation and other services as needed by the individual. Many of our clients have been homeless for several years, and it takes a well-rounded approach to stabilize them. While these services are more costly than providing only the shelter, the long-term impact is evident. Thank you for considering Turning Point Foundation for Our Place Safe Haven for CDBG funding. We thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Clerk, anyone else? Okay, so with that, we are going to close the public hearing, and I'll ask for directions from my colleagues.
I'm happy to support staff's recommendations.
Second. There's a motion to second. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Trembley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kilday.
Yes, that passes unanimously. So it's going to get us down to the next public hearing. It's in ordinance of the City Council, related to accessory-dwelling unit regulations. I'm going to ask Mr. Sanchez, would you like to start us off tonight, please?
Thanks, Mayor Kilday and councilmembers. The next item before you is a series of zoning code amendments that address the 2024 legislation that's related to housing and land use that came down from the state. And the presenter, again, is going to be Mr. James Fowler.
Thank you very much. Well, starting off, SB 477, this one's quite straightforward. Essentially, the state moved the ADU, the ADU section of state law from one chapter to another. Our code referenced the old location, so we just need to update it to reference the new correct location. SB 1211, a little more complex. The proposed update calls for a change in the definition of livable space. The number of ADUs allowed on a multifamily lot is changed as well. It's changed to a maximum of eight detached ADUs on a multifamily lot, but it scales with the number of existing multifamily units. So if, for example, there is a triplex on a lot, they can do three detached ADUs. If there's a fourplex, four, all the way up to eight. Once you reach eight, that's, that's the maximum number of eight detached ADUs. So even if you have nine apartments, you cannot do nine ADUs. SB 1123 relates to ministerial subdivisions. This law, unfortunately, the city does not have a great ability to make changes to our municipal code to adapt it to local circumstance. But to outline the bill broadly, for subdivisions of 10 units or less on certain lots, they're now to be processed ministerially. That means without planning commissioner, city council approval, and again, ministerially. So if they check all the boxes, it's something the city is compelled to approve. We cannot apply objective standards. We can't apply objective standards to this process, which can conflict with the standards laid out in the bill. And so because of that, the city can't impose standards which physically preclude the development of the project built to a density of 20 units per acre. So what that would mean on a, you know, an 8,000-square-foot lot, they could, someone could conceivably do four units. We cannot require any setback between the units, except as required in the California Building Code, and the setback is essentially situational based on the fire rating of the wall, the number of openings in the wall, et cetera. The city can't require parking to be enclosed or covered, and is limited in the setbacks it can require as well. The caveat to all this is the law is substantially geographically limited. The single fam, a single-family lot would need to be vacant. We really do not have too many lots owned, single-family in the city that are vacant. In fact, you know, just looking at an aerial, I, I really couldn't find any. So there's that. The, you know, a single-family lot to qualify for this bill would also need to be surrounded on 75% of the perimeter by urban uses. That really means what you think it would mean, so other houses, businesses, et cetera, if it abuts farm fields or something like that, that wouldn't qualify. Going on, it also can't be used on farmlands, wetlands, couldn't be used in SOAR. There's quite a few areas where it just, it can't be utilized. Really, the one silver lining for local control is the city can preclude the development of ADUs on lots created as a result of this process. So the proposed red lines do do that. They, it would preclude- They would preclude the development of ADUs on projects that utilize this procedure. So SB 450, it's an amendment to an older law. You may remember it from a few years ago, SB 9, which is the urban lot split law, where you could essentially divide a lot into two and place a couple of units on each new lot from a property that's zoned R1. SB 450 amends SB 9 in the following ways. You know, formerly urban dwelling unit developments were precluded from demolishing more than 25% of the existing exterior walls. That provision's gone away. And the, maybe the bigger piece is SB 450 prohibits local agencies from imposing objective zoning subdivision or design standards on urban dwelling unit developments that don't apply uniformly to other projects in the R1 zone. So basically, what the law requires is us to treat any housing development or change within the R1 zone exactly the same as we would an urban dwelling unit project, or apply the same standards. To comply with this, the proposed red lines generalize the existing urban dwelling unit requirements to apply to all new dwelling units. Now, given what I said earlier, that there's really almost zero lots within the city that are zoned R1 that are vacant, it will de facto, for the most part, still continue to apply to urban lot splits and dwelling units. But there is now a across-the-board sort of application. So changes to state law have increasingly limited the city's ability to apply non-objective standards to all sorts of different kinds of housing projects, including the ones I mentioned, but certainly a few others as well. So to combat this, staff is proposing the establishment of objective design standards for residential structures. The standards would include, sorry, the standards would include standards for paint, a minimum of two colors, roof material and pitch, a minimum three to 12 roof pitch with limitations on color, elevation material limitations as well, a minimum of three different materials on all building elevations and consisting of brick, stone, fiber cement siding, or stucco, and specific standards as far as what architectural styles may be utilized. Those would be traditional, Spanish colonial revival, Monterey craftsman, and French country. And then within those, a housing project would need to select from a kind of menu of items that are indicative of that architectural style. We wanted to, or staff wanted to make sure there was, there were no unintended consequences of these objective design standards in the form of, you know, precluding homeowners from doing things that are reasonable, or, you know, putting forth a good project that maybe doesn't perfectly meet these standards, but is still a great project. So there is a lever for flexibility in the form of the Director of Community Development being able to approve alternative designs that meet a certain three findings. Those are an equivalent or superior level of architectural quality and visual interest compared to the objective standard, compatibility, the neighborhood with the neighborhood, and that the exception does not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare. The design quality piece, that first finding, would also apply in the case where an existing residential structures fully or partially destroyed, and that was specifically thought of due to the recent fires. AB 2904 has expanded public noticing requirements for planning commission meetings, so it's gone up to 20 days for anything that changes zones or affects the uses in a zone, and the proposed red lines reflect that. Finally, staff midway through this code update process, after planning commission, the city received a letter from HCD directing additional changes to the city's ADU ordinance. Most of the changes articulated in HCD's letter were changes we were already in the process of making, because they had reviewed our ordinance we submitted to them, I believe it was February of 2024, and they took some time to get back to us until after 2025, when, you know, changes went into effect January 2025. So many of the changes they asked for were something we were already, we had already taken to planning commission. But in response to HCD's letter, a few additional changes were made to the proposed red lines to directly quote from state law, so there could be no ambiguity that HCD felt was there. It's key to note that the additional items identified by HCD will not actually affect staff's implementation of the ordinance. They're really just, we are parroting state law exactly, so we meet all the points in their letter. And this slide features staff's recommendations, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Tennyson, Vice Mayor Tennyson?
James, did I understand you correctly that you don't see SB 1123 as being a great challenge to the city?
I, due to the, I guess, yes and no. SB 1123 amended an existing law that allowed a similar process for multifamily housing developments that passed, it was last year. I do see that piece as being more significant, because that piece, for multifamily housing developments, the lot doesn't need to be vacant, meaning it could be used for redevelopment. For the single-family housing piece, if a developer wanted to use it for single-family housing because it, to utilize the law, the lot must be vacant. That precludes where it can be used in the city. So I think the multifamily housing piece could have a significant impact, the single-family housing piece, just due to the lack of vacant land in the city that's zoned single-family. I'm not, I don't think that piece will have as big an impact.
Based on what I've read about the law and the interpretations of it, our city's community design element in the general plan is basically useless at this point, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And that's, that's in part, in part why staff is proposing the objective design standards, because you're right, the community design element is in large part unenforceable.
So what this law has done is taking, taken discretion away from our planning commission and our city council. And isn't it true that it offered broad discretion to HCD to interpret how we have to implement this state law?
That's correct.
And how do we know the objective standards in the proposed ordinance aren't going to be challenged by HCD?
Well, I guess we can't say for an absolute certainty that they won't. I mean, they, our ADU ordinance is an example of an area where they have challenged us, so it's, it's, I wouldn't say it's impossible that they would, though we did pay very careful attention to actually looking at HCD, what kind of, kind of a guide HCD put out for what are objective standards and how we should do them. So we basically tried to somewhat closely match their own kind of rule set, or what was their rule set maybe a year or two ago that they put out. So with that in mind, we, we don't believe they'll do that, but it's not impossible.
But they do have broad discretion. They interpret the legislation, and they have broad discretion in changing what they want, when they want, without any input from the city, correct?
That's correct.
So under this, especially 1123, do our planning commissions become almost an archaic commission for the city because it's taking or handcuffing them on local land use policy?
I think for housing, that that may be somewhat of an unfortunate truth, because as, as they relate to housing, they are so constricted on, so often they're kind of pushed to say yes, or maybe their, the item is not even allowed to go to planning commission. So I think for housing, unfortunately, that's, there's some truth to that.
And I'll ask, I have several more questions, but I will defer to my fellow council members. I just want to ask, the impact on planning and community development on the ministerial approval, which has to be completed within 60 days? What kind of impact, Mr. Sanchez, is that going to have on your office and your staff?
It certainly puts additional pressure on our staff and asks us to provide additional resources. That said, I do believe that in terms of our process, our process works faster than the 60-day time period. We're typically turning around reviews in under 30 days, much closer to 20. And I don't see this as something that significantly changes our process. If I could add broadly, we're seeing this trend with housing laws. It's not just SB 1123. It's the removal of discretion and the requirement for objectivity. We feel strongly that our objective standards are objective and would withstand any, any challenge from HCD.
Would it be true to say that if this law was implemented 30 or 40 years ago, Camarillo would look nothing like it does now?
That's, that's a tough question to answer. I don't know if it would look nothing like it does currently, but it certainly kind of removes some pillars of Camarillo's design, design planning that's occurred over the years.
So this law does put additional workload on you and your staff. But again, as is typical coming from the state legislature.
Absolutely. It's been a steady drift.
It has no funds attached to increase staffing and to respond in a timely manner. It's same staff, it's an unfunded mandate from the state, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or Martina?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is an item that gave me a headache and increased my blood pressure over the weekend, unfortunately. And I, I don't think we're fans of removing local control. The question that I had, and I think David, you touched on it a bit, but it was, this question is more for our city attorney. So if staff is proposing the chapter 19.4 to establish the design standards for the new residential structures, and they're, and they're doing that or proposing that in light of the, these changes to state law, in what capacity does that really protect us? Or are there additional things that we should be looking at?
Well, by following the laws, then we won't get any sort of potential technical letters from the HCD saying that we need to update our ordinance or make changes to our ordinance, which could impact our ability to approve projects or take other discretionary actions we may have. Going forward, there's going to be new laws. So again, this is going to be an exercise, unfortunately, that the council's going to see probably every year. So we will, you know, look at those legislative requirements and put forth what we believe is consistent with the law, but provides as much authority to the council as possible.
And then in terms of like very, the very specific standards that staff delineated, it sounds like the city still cannot require developers to adhere to these standards? And that's what I was confused about then. If we're putting them in our chapter, or maybe staff can answer that?
I, I'd be glad to answer that. So in the vast majority of circumstances, those objective design standards can still be applied.
Okay.
There, you know, there may be certain circumstances for cer, because the state's established so many different processes for housing development now, there almost seems like there's 20 different paths that could be used. And certain of those, maybe some of those objective standards could be nullified, but we designed them with the intent that they would be used and be able to be used and imposed on developers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Santandro?
This may sound like a very obvious question, but were any of these proposed amendments to the ordinance city initiated?
No, it was brought about by the state changing the law.
Thank you, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Tony, he has a comment, question, comments, Mr. Tennyson, would you like to start? Any other comments, Mr. Tenny, Mr.?
I have more than a few comments, but I'll try not to. So it's really difficult to, I'm, I'm, I'm having a tough time remembering casting a more unenthusiastic yes vote with no criticism at all of you, James and David. I've done a great job putting this all together, but I've got a tough time remembering when I've been more unenthusiastic. And the reason that I have to cast a yes vote is to comply with state law. It's difficult to reconcile from a public policy standpoint. This state's public policy relative to this issue is in utter shambles. It's really difficult to recognize. You imagine, if you will, living in a beautiful city like Camarillo, extremely well-planned, and you've been direct, we've been directed over the years to come up with our general plan, and all of its elements associated with it, including the housing element, and all of the planning requirements, and all of the local engagement with residents that has gone into that planning process. Not to mention spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, on that planning process and on making this community a beautiful community. And then, and then, over the course of the last few years, getting a small group of legislators who are taking a one-size-fits-all statewide on these requirements with zero, zero regard for community planning efforts. And zero regard for the millions of dollars spent by municipalities in good faith like Camarillo undertaking the planning. So you can tell I'm not exactly ambivalent about this. It's nuts. And the loss of local control is nuts, and our state's public policy is in utter shambles. And we know more is coming, because there's more legislation in Sacramento this year that if you presented that tonight, even the pending or the proposed legislation, we'd scratch our heads and go, why? It's just, it's just crazy. So I'll be an unenthusiastic yes vote. I really hand it to staff, particularly on the, coming up with the objective design standards. Councilmember Santangelo asked what I think is the most pertinent question here. Is this coming from the city? No. Is this coming from any, any intelligent municipality? No. It's coming from a small group of legislators and a small group of unaccountable, unelected bureaucrats in Sacramento at HCD who are putting their thumbs down on all of us. And it's just a travesty, and it's too bad people, it's too bad our public, it's too bad there isn't more recognition of what's going on here. So thank you for letting me comment on this before we take a vote.
Any other comments there? Vice Mayor Tennyson, or did?
Yes, I will, oh, I, I will echo Councilmember Trembley's comments. We have, what, 200 legislators in the state capitol, 120 and 80, 120? And I wonder how many of these 120 have ever been to Camarillo or know what Camarillo is or where it is? But they're making decisions from their high purchase, just like Councilmember Trembley says, with no knowledge on our local community, no input from our local community, very little regard for the input that we provide to our three legislators, to assembly persons, and a state senator. So once again, the people important in this process have been completely eliminated from setting policy on local development. I know one of the pieces of legislation that Mr. Trembley referred to would allow a seven-story residential unit to be built within a half a mile of a major transit center. Well, we have one, the MetroLink Station. And I just shake when I think of property across the street from St. Mary Magdalene Chapel. Chapel with a seven-story apartment complex, blocking one of the most iconic and memorable views of Camarillo. I said it last time, the best government is the government that governs least, and the best government is the government closest to the people. Sacramento is not close to our community. Your local districts, your local city councils, our planning commissions, we're close to the local community. We interact with them, I would say, on a daily basis when we're out in the community. We should have more say in what goes on in Sacramento. I will hold my nose to vote yes on this item, only again because we have no choice.
Do you have a comment?
I, no, I have nothing. Ditto, ditto, ditto.
Any other comments?
I'm going to make a comment that I'm going to invite the legislatures from the city to come down to our city of Camarillo and to meet with us, to meet with former council members, a lot of citizens that, after they have retired, have stayed in this area, and a lot of them can live anywhere they want to live. But a lot of the reason why it's not just the weather, but they like the planning that the city has done since 1964. We haven't hit 1,000, but we've had way more successes than we have not successes here. And it has been a tough uphill climb for, for that. There's been a lot of people that did not agree with how we plan the city. And I think if you go back to them now, they'll probably, most if not all, will say, you know, all things being said, you did a pretty good job here. So with that, I'm going to say ditto to all of my colleagues up here, the questions and the comments that they made. We're going to fight tooth and nail, give every ounce of energy that we have to keep our city what it is today. That, I can assure the public here, whatever we can do to keep Camarillo, Camarillo, we're going to fight really, really hard to do that. So with that, this is an advertised public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to ask the clerk, do we have any comments or anybody who'd like to address this? So with that, I will close the public hearing, and I am going to ask for direction from my colleagues. And I don't blame anybody from not jumping out there first. So who would like to make that, that, that quantum leap on this?
I'm wondering how to preface this motion, Mr. Mayor, but I will unenthusiastically, with all respect to staff, who've done a great job, move staff recommendations.
And I will with trepidation second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second, second with great trepidation. So with that, I'm going to ask the city clerk to please do a roll call.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes, and I will light candles afterwards.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Trembley?
Reluctant, yes.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
Emeril Kildee?
Yes. So with great trepidation, that passes 5-0.
All right. So if there's not any more information to come forward to the council tonight, we stand adjourned.